I will call the order of this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, April 12th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, would you please lead us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Leeves, would you please hold the roll? Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Vois? Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Present.
Ms. Wilds?
Present.
Madam President, you have a call.
Wonderful, thank you. We need an approval of the executive session memorandum from the meeting on March 29th.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the executive session memorandum. All those in favor, raise your right hand. So seven in favor, one abstention. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of minutes from the March 29th meeting.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One abstention, seven in favor, one abstention. And may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero, thank you. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any slips up here, but if anyone would like to speak, there's a paper slip on the table in the back. Please fill it out and bring it up to the clerk and then we'll call ya. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report that you would like to share this evening? No. All right. Council committee reports. The Downtown District Committee, Mr. Smith?
Yes. Downtown District Committee met on Wednesday, March 30th. Darren Peterson, myself, and Megan Wilds were present. The bulk of the meeting, we talked about a trip to Franklin that the committee took back on March 16th. We met with city officials in Franklin and did a walking tour of their downtown with Kate Baker from Noblesville Main Street, Bob Dubois from The Chamber, and Ailey from Nickel Plate Arts. And that was a really great opportunity for us to see the investments that they have made in their downtown core. They started their streetscape process in 2005 and just recently completed the bulk of theirs. So that was a very helpful trip, and we were just summarizing what our takeaways were to implement here when we talk through our streetscape process as well over the next few years. At the end, we touched on the Bridge of Flowers. Andrew Rodewald said that bids were opened on March 15th. The contract, as we know by now, was awarded to Morphe Construction. There will be a road closure during a month-long process to get that in place starting June 6th with a completion by the 4th of July.
Mr. Smith, I'd like to make a clarification. One lane of Logan Street Bridge will be closed.
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
The bridge will stay open.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Smith from the Downtown District? Moving on to the Roads Committee.
Madam President, thank you very much. Roads Committee met April 1st. Various things going on across the city. I have five pages of minutes from that meeting, so I'll try to hit the highlights. 146th Street lighting has been delayed slightly due to receipt of new poles, but that project, all the poles have been removed, and so now it's a matter of getting the new poles and getting those installed, so that should move along quickly. The street rehabilitation for 22, part of that uses a community crossing matching grant funds that we received that will involve Wickham Ridge, River Run, Westbridge, Monument Street, and east of 10th Street in Old Town, and Field Drive and 16th Street. So those things are happening across the city. The 21 Community Crossing Matching Grant, I think we're still waiting for the awards for that. Assuming we get those, that will entail Potter's Wood, Stony Ridge, part of North Harbor, the Howell Place subdivision. So those are on the docket for renovation or improvement. On 32, you've seen the work that started to happen there. It's one of the indot projects that we're doing, the roundabouts at River Road, 32. So it's gonna be a little bit messy around there, to put it mildly, but no pain, no gain, but that project is underway. All the rest of the roundabout projects on 38, Logan's Oakmont, everything's on track from a time standpoint. The 32 project, the added travel lanes, that's out to 25 or 26, but that still remains on the indot docket. Allisonville South Trail Project started this week, so you'll notice if you're going south on Allisonville or 10th Street out of town, the work has started there. That will connect basically Wellington Northeast via trail to the downtown, which has been something that I think we've needed to do for a long time, but it's more of a beautification project, and it'll drain that whole south side of the area, which will help from a future development standpoint. So that's really kind of the crux of that development. Let's see, of course, there's Pleasant Street, which is moving forward, probably one of the biggest priorities we've had as a council. The right-of-way acquisition continues there and will continue. I think our city engineers here, Ally Krupsky, is spearheading all that. If you have questions, probably best to ask her, but we've got projects, a little Chicago Road Trail over Morris Lake that is happening. Construction expected in '23 and '24. Trail under, Stony Creek Trail under 37, that's a construction spring of '23. I mean, the list goes on. There's so many different things going on. The Bridge of Flowers, as you've heard about, the Downtown District Committee was involved in that, and the county, the city, on a collaborative effort to improve the bridge. That will be ongoing. So suffice to say, we've got several things here, and Ally and her small but mighty team are doing a terrific job, so these minutes are posted if you'd like to read through them, but we're making several improvements in the city, but I ask everybody to just be patient and drive a little slower through those construction areas. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee report. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. We met April 7th. Greg O'Connor, Darren Peterson, Aaron Smith, and myself. Chuck Haberman discussed the Economic Development Agreement with Innovation One LLC. Sam Barris discussed summary of routine appropriation transfers per RC-1-22, Section 1, first quarter. And Jess Spalding discussed summary of appropriation of grant proceeds per RC-2-22-1, first quarter. There's a short meeting, and the Claims Docket comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions of Mr. Davis? Any questions?
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Okay. Mr. Schwartz, I understand, would you like to speak now?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Steve Schwartz, 17335 North Gray Road, Noblesville, Indiana. Just like a big shout-out, this past Sunday morning at our store, about 8:30, there was a pretty serious incident right in the middle of the highway. Unfortunately, I was the one that called 911. The response time was unbelievable, so big kudos to your Noblesville Police Department and your Noblesville Fire Department, the medics. I just couldn't tell you how big a help and the response time, so big kudos to you. Thank you for what you do. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Thank you to our public safety staff. Okay. We will move on to previously discussed ordinances. Ordinance 15-03-22. Council to consider ordinance 15-03-22 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Downtown Development Fund for the Logan Street Bridge Enhancement, also known as the Bridge of Flowers. Mr. Barris?
Yeah, thank you, council members. Sam Barris, Office of Finance and Accounting. So this is the second reading of an additional appropriation of $362,000 out of the Downtown Development Fund. As referenced, this is a portion of the funding for these Logan Street Bridge Enhancements, also known as the Bridge of Flowers. At the last council meeting, council already adopted a transfer resolution that funded, provided the other portion of the funding for that project. So I'm not gonna go over the whole project funding package again since we discussed that at length at the last meeting. However, I will just remind the council that this $362,000 additional appropriation, the intent is for Hamilton County to reimburse the city for this portion of the project cost. So while council is authorizing this money to be spent out of the Downtown Development Fund, the objective here is to have that money be put back by the county. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Barris? This is an item for a public hearing, so I would move that we open the public hea-- or I'm just gonna open the public hearing. I don't have to move it at all.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I've moved to close the public hearing for ordinance number 15-3-22.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 15-03-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 15-03-22. This is a roll-call vote. Ms. Leeves?
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 16-03-22 and ordinance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana, approving and authorizing the execution of leases relating to the financing and acquisition of real estate for the development of Innovation Mile in the city, pledging local income tax revenues to the City of Noblesville Redevelopment Commission for the payment of lease rentals in connection therewith, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith.
It's a mouthful.
I don't think that there's a period in it.
I'm gonna consolidate that, I'm sorry. Thank you, council members. Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director, for the record. Recall from your last meeting, this is an item that approves and authorizes the proposed financing for our strategic investment in land acquisition out in Innovation Mile. Since your last meeting, there have been no changes to the ordinance as written. This item does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the council's finance committee, and I would request that this item be approved as presented. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Murray?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd move that we approve ordinance 16-03-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 16-03-22 as presented. This is a roll-call vote. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 17-03-22 and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2022, for Washington Business Park 2 project, and the lending of the proceeds thereof to Patch Development LLC, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. Mr. Haberman?
Good evening. This is a bond ordinance to issue a developer-backed bond, $7 million, that we presented last meeting. Nothing new is, nothing has changed in that ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but I recommend that we approve the ordinance as written.
Any questions of Mr. Haberman?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve ordinance 17-03-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 17-03-22 as presented. This is a roll-call vote. Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
I have a conflict of interest on the file, so I abstained.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Seven aye, zero nay, one abstention, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 19-04-22 and ordinance amending the traffic schedule in Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Noblesville, Indiana.
Move introduce.
Second.
Ms. Krupsky?
Good evening. I do wanna start off by thanking Councilman O'Connor for the nice words, but also specifically thanking you because this does happen to be Work Zone Safety Awareness Week, and so by you telling people to slow down and be aware, I think that was very timely, so thank you for doing that. Now on to the ordinance, the amendment to the traffic schedule. There are quite a few items on here, and they've been listed out in your packet. I will summarize them, but I do not plan to go through all of them because there's probably 30-plus. This is routine. We try to lump a bunch of schedule amendments together so that I'm not up here every week, and what this does is it actually just makes things that we are already put in place enforceable for our police department. So the first change is to Schedule 1, which is a speed limit, so Allisonville Road, the project, the trail project that was mentioned earlier, the speed limit will be lowered on that road to 30 miles per hour, so this puts that speed limit, that new speed limit into the traffic code, and that will be from Wellington Parkway all the way to 10th Street. Or sorry, all the way to Christian. The next change, your memo is actually incorrect. It says Schedule 2, it's to Schedule 3. I'm sure you all caught that. And it's for stopping yield-controlled streets. There are about 21 changes here, and this is where we've added new subdivisions and new roads, and so this is just putting those all into our actual traffic code. Then there's a change to Schedule 4, restricted turns. This adds a no-left turn restriction for the westbound traffic at the intersection of Maple and 8th. This signage is already up there, just because we needed to restrict it to improve our traffic flow, and it's nearly impossible and not very safe to make a left turn out of there right now, so this makes that enforceable. And then the last change was to Schedule 5, parking prohibited at all times, adds three areas of no parking. These were all brought up in Traffic Committee, and our Traffic Committee did approve these changes for no parking, and for the most part, it is all safety concern issues, so. I would like to ask that this get approved on the first reading, if possible, and I do recommend the approval of this ordinance.
Any questions of Ms. Krupsky?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
At the request of our city engineer, I will make a motion to waive the rules and pass on first reading ordinance 20-04-22.
It's actually 1904.
19, sorry. 1904-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to waive the rules and pass ordinance 1904-22 on the first reading. All those in favor of waiving the rules, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 19-04-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-04-22. This is a roll-call vote.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 20-04-22 and ordinance authorizing the City of Noblesville to become a member of the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7.7. Eyre?
Good evening, Madam President.
Moved and introduced.
Oh, gosh. Sorry, I was the king of that when I was on the council.
Moved and introduced.
Madam Clerk, we able to take?
I seconded, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry. My apologies.
Now, Mayor Johnson.
God, so arrogant I am. Let's see here. Are we able to take miscellaneous number one with that as well, since there's a resolution in line?
in line with the same topic, or do you want them separate?
So then we will also discuss this evening miscellaneous number one, council to consider Resolution RC-21-22, a resolution adopting a preliminary strategic economic development plan for the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority pursuant to IC-36-7.7.
Great.
Mayor Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Great to be with you. Tonight's topic involves a topic that's been discussed regionally here in central Indiana for the better part of the last probably six to seven years. You know, we oftentimes think of our regional competitors here in Noblesville as maybe some other cities within Hamilton County, or different counties against, around us here in central Indiana, but really, central Indiana as a region is competing across the United States with different MSAs such as Nashville, or Minneapolis, or Denver, or even, we're even competing globally. And in order to do so, some elected officials have taken the steps to move forward with a new regional development authority. A regional development authority was established in 2018. There was legislation in front of the Indiana General Assembly that allowed central Indiana to form a new regional development authority. There currently is a RDA in place that I believe is home to Indianapolis and Carmel that was formed when the Red Line Transit System was brought forth probably six or seven years ago. This is a new RDA that would replace that. The goal of the regional development authority is to basically allow us in central Indiana as communities, not just cities, but counties, also invite the private sector and different public sector entities to come aboard with a unified vision and begin to compete against other regions across the United States. A regional development authority is really designed to foster collaboration, cooperation, and to speak with one voice, align the public sector on key issues to help drive key initiatives in central Indiana, work collaboratively to enhance region and quality of place rather than addressing incoherently, and promote and invest strategies that play to the region's strength to position central Indiana as a magnet for world-class talent. You may recall recently, the central Indiana region, the White River region, applied for some ready funds, which we were awarded $20 million during that presentation, during that exercise, and I have to give a kudos to Sarah Reid. She really, really took that from a regional standpoint. Noblesville was the point of contact for that, and it was Sarah Reid's baby for a long time. She's the one that helped drive this forward. But what we learned from that is that many other regions across the state of Indiana already have well-oiled, well-staffed regional development authorities that are, that are up and running every single day, looking at different regional opportunities, federal grant dollars, different regional economic development opportunities. Central Indiana has, while we have a loose coordinated group of central Indiana elected officials, do not have an official governmental structure in place to allow us to go after federal grant dollars and compete on a more competitive basis. So we learned that quite a bit from the ready opportunities. So what this has done, this RDA, I can tell you, has no financial commitment with it. Other RDAs have different taxing authorities across the state of Indiana. This does not, this simply sets up the government structure for us going forward. There is no commitment at this time for any financial contribution from the City of Noblesville. I will be honest and say that over time, our goal would be to have each individual group pitch in some dollars, so we can hire a staff person to help work day in and day out from a regional standpoint. We do that already. We give financially to the Indy Chamber of Commerce, the Indy Partnership. They are actually on board with this concept and have suggested that we even dial down our commitment to them and transfer some dollars from our commitments in the Indy Partnership to this regional development authority. That conversation's ongoing. You'll probably see a line item for that in the budget this fall, as we get some financial structure in place. As we do want to have independent staff hired that can look out for the entire region versus our individual staffs at each individual city, which we've done up until now, but we view having an outside organization as a benefit going forward. So the goal here is to, in Phase One, invite all those members who were a part of the White River Ready Grant Project, which includes Zionsville, McCordsville, Carmel, Fishers, Noblesville, Westfield, Anderson, Indianapolis, Zionsville, and Zionsville and McCordsville, will be the first to adopt this regional development authority over the next several months. This will actually allow us then to receive our $20 million in ready funds. You have to have a regional development authority established. We were up until now using the Indianapolis MPO, which has been a gracious partner for us, but this actually will allow us to have a more local feel when it comes to our $20 million allotment. And then as those other communities that are in different RDAs currently in central Indiana going for ready dollars, as they use their ready dollars, they will then opt in to this new Central Indiana Regional Development Authority, which is currently called CERTA, Central Indiana Regional Development Authority. Probably will have some marketing folks take a look at that at some point in time and come up with some jazzy name for it. But right now, we are actually the very first community to be taking a look at this ordinance and this resolution and adopting this moving forward with your approval here. Tonight, you'll have obviously a first reading of the ordinance in front of you. I will also ask, Madam President, that the resolution be held and read again in two weeks, so we're able to adopt the ordinance first, and then we'll adopt the resolution, and we will be adopted in. I know our friends in Fishers and Carmel and Westfield will be doing the same thing over the next month. Indianapolis will be tackling this in the month of May as well. So this is the first time in many, many decades that we're trying to speak with one voice going forward and allow other entities to come alongside us and make our central Indiana region just that much more impactful. So very exciting step forward for regional collaboration here tonight. Appreciate your consideration, happy to answer any questions on what you have in front of you today.
Any questions of Mayor Johnson?
Yeah, it has, when it says authority, what authority do they have, if any?
So it depends, like I said, the authority of this RDA will be, so each community that opts into the RDA will have one board seat on the regional development authority. They'll be voting on, you know, grant dollars that we're going for from the federal government. They'll be hiring a staff within the, within the RDA. Other RDAs across the state of Indiana have taxing authorities, so that's why the term authority is there. So they control that. This RDA, as of right now, doesn't have any separate taxing entity, so, but we will sell, as Noblesville will have one vote on the board of the RDA as we go after grant dollars or big-picture projects going forward. That's the authority they will have. Additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, does this give us a better opportunity to go after federal grant dollars, or no?
This gives us an opportunity to go after federal grant dollars. I would say we were, we have not put our best foot forward because we haven't had a regional entity. We have individually, as communities, gone after grant dollars. You've seen that through the MPO. We have some folks in planning that are looking at this. We have never has, had a designated operation looking regionally for grant dollars. And I say this carefully, but the current administration in Washington is writing checks faster than most can cash them. So whether you agree with that philosophy or not, I think it's imperative that our region be looking for federal grant opportunities when it comes to the dollars coming from our friends in Washington, DC. So it will, it will absolutely give us a leg up with designated staff with an eye on that opportunity 24/7.
And then from the, I was just wondering, because you said with the Indy Partnership and with the RDA, will they continue to work collaborative?
Yeah.
Collaboratively, if I can get that.
Yeah, the idea would be the Indy Partnership, which is kind of the Indy Chamber of Commerce, the Indianapolis MPO will really slot underneath the RDA. They will be playing a supporting role, which is what they're designed to do best anyways. We've had different entities trying to play at a 50,000-foot view up until now, and we really need a governing board and staff that's driving that entire big picture. Those other groups that have supported us up till date will slide underneath that and be a supporting arm of that, and all of them are well aware of it and actually have been looking for the central Indiana region to form this for some time.
Because the Northeast has done a pretty good job of this, I think.
Well, if you look at the regions, especially the Ready Grant being a great example as the most recent, the regions that got the $50 million, all had well-established RDAs with, with staff in place who are actually helping to formulate the vision for those communities. I think central Indiana is a little bit different, Councilor O'Connor, in the fact that not only do we have a strong capital city, but you also have some pretty strong doughnut communities that are really operating on their own going forward. I mean, Noblesville being the 10th largest city has a very strong and vibrant economy. The same could be said about our neighbors all around the county. That's different in different parts of the state, but we're missing out on opportunities for a regional conversation by not having a one cohesive unit of a government structure looking at regional economic development. But the ones that received the $50 million all had strong RDAs in place. So we're trying to learn from, learn from others, knowing that Ready 2.0 will probably be coming in next, the next legislative budget cycle in about a year from now, so we're going to be in best position.
Additional questions or comments for Mayor? I just want to clarify, so this funding is not just for transportation funding. So this is additional, I would say, community infrastructure dollars that we could use. And are we, are counties included in this?
Currently, the municipalities are included in it. We foresee over the next several years, counties will come on board with this. This will kind of be a rolling process, just with the grant dollars that are out there right now. Others have to opt out of certain other entities in order to opt into ours, but counties will be a part of this. To your first question, these dollars, and it's not just focused on dollars, it could be regional attraction of big, big-ticket economic development opportunities. I use Amazon 2.0 as a great example of that when that came through. These type of organizations will help, be helping to put the collaborative strategy to go for workforce development opportunities, economic development opportunities, road funding opportunities across the board. So it's really taking the, a higher level of view than just our municipality here singularly here in Noblesville, and looking at what is the strengths and weaknesses of the region, and what do we need to be going after going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we will see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to miscellaneous item number two. Council to consider acceptance of conflict of interest disclosure by Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. I have a conflict of interest on a project. Two of the four partners we worked with for several years, I even worked with Brian's dad and Seth Alt's father several years ago, and they had an opportunity in Noblesville that we'd been asked to put a proposal together, and we were successful, and I'm there today. Innovation One is the name of the project.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move to accept the conflict of interest disclosure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the conflict of interest disclosure. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any abstentions?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on to miscellaneous number three. Council to consider Resolution RC-20-22, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Innovation One LLC. Mr. Haberman.
Good evening, council. Thanks for being here. I'm excited to bring in front of you Innovation One. You may recall the executive session we had in February, where we were able to introduce the project team and preliminarily share this project. Tonight, we have... What's up, sir? I'll just...
There.
Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge that Brian Augustine from the project team is here. He was able to make it tonight, and our friends at Genovus, who are partnering with them to help us get across the finish line with this project. So just some of the project details. Innovation One, and it's named appropriately because this will be the first development within the Innovation Mile since we've announced it, which is very exciting. Innovation One is made up of two companies, a construction firm and a brokerage, to create Innovation One. And the two companies are Certus Medical and Radiological Care Services, which are two medical technology companies that are looking to expand and relocate their global headquarters here in Noblesville on the site that you can see here on the screen. This is property, 8.44 acre property, just east of Board Warner that you see there in the bottom left-hand corner. So this will be the first new development within Innovation One. They're planning to build a 90,000-square-foot building to relocate the two companies. Their investment will be $12.7 million to make this happen, and then the job creation will be 81 full-time equivalents and with an average wage of $72,000. So it really meets all the marks and exceeds all the marks that we put in place to kind of take Innovation Mile and Noblesville to the next level. It meets our targeted industries, it well exceeds our wage requirements, and there are a good number of jobs, high-quality jobs. Additionally, I've got a picture of, there we go, that's even better. That's a, that's a rendering of the architecture that they're planning to build out on Innovation One, so it'll be a welcome addition to the gateway of Innovation Mile, obviously with frontage on 69 as well. The city's contribution is the eight-and-a-half acre property. So you may recall, initially, Panacea was announced to be on this site. Just with the timing and some of the things that are happening around the world, that's been on hold, and we've discussed that with them, and they're in a place, and they understand the opportunity that we have in front of us. They're excited about the growth in Noblesville, and we understand that there's going to be other opportunities for them whenever they're ready to relocate here. So I would recommend that we approve the economic development agreement, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have about the project.
Any questions of Mr. Haberman? I would say we can't really comment on the architectural design, not since we know who the architect is.
You can comment.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve Resolution RC-20-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-20-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven in favor? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Mr. Peterson. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous item number four. Council to receive a summary of appropriation of first-quarter grant proceeds pursuant to Resolution RC-2-22. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, council members. So this report is our first quarterly report on grant proceeds that have been received and appropriated by the Controller's Office. So this is pursuant to RC-222, which gives the Controller's Office the authority to appropriate grant proceeds received by the city if they come with a specific defined purpose. Essentially, we get money from a grant that has a specific purpose outlined in the grant terms. We can just say, all right, let's, we're authorizing that money to be spent for whatever purpose was laid out by the grant terms, and then this is our quarterly update to you. So the report is in your packets. It lists four grants. I'm not going to go through them specifically unless people want me to, unless there's questions about any one of them. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Barris with these grants?
Just a comment, I think this is a good value add. You get to see where those dollars are going every quarter. I think it's just good practice.
Thank you.
So with that, um...
There is no action required.
This is reporting to us this evening.
Correct.
With no other questions, we will move on to miscellaneous number five. Council receive a summary of fiscally neutral first-quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to Resolution RC-1-22, Section One. Mr. Barris?
Thank you. So as with the previous item, this is simply a report to council. No action is required, and this is your quarterly update on small appropriation transfers that have been initiated directly by our office. These have to be under $50,000 per item, not exceeding $125,000 in aggregate over the course of the quarter, and they have to be technical in nature, so not leading to any significant operational change or anything like that. So again, there are four items. They are listed in a summary table in your packet. All of them are $10,000 or less. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about them, or if you see something on here and you want to follow up with us afterwards, we're happy to take your questions, but otherwise, I'll leave it there.
Any questions for Mr. Barris on this item? Seeing none, thank you very much. That is it for our agenda this evening. Any council comments? I will just say that I know, Ali Krupski and I were talking about this, our social media feeds will be talking about River Road being closed beginning as of April eighteenth, and that traffic will be diverted either to the south to Hundred Forty-Sixth Street or through the shopping center kind of by just south of the bank. So, you will start to see more conversations about River Road closing for that roundabout construction to keep moving forward, so.
Is that a two-week closure?
I believe so, yes. Two-week closure.
I think that's right.
All right. We are adjourned.